Meeting to order. Jaclyn, would you call the roll, please?
Coburn?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ganser?
Here.
Judd?
Here.
Keenbaum?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
All right, I will make the motion that we adjourn into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Section 1985-1E of the Wisconsin statutes deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session specifically to prepare for Whitewater Education Association negotiations.
Second?
Is there any discussion? Jaclyn?
Coburn? Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
All right, well, let's adjourn into closed session. Well, welcome, everyone. We have reconvened in open session, so if you can, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, first up is approval of the agenda. I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of 10B under the personnel report, I'd like to remove that, but move the rest of the agenda besides that.
Second?
Is that a second?
It is, Kelly.
Any discussion? Jaclyn?
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
It was Harry, he's gone.
I just promoted him to panelist, he should be here shortly.
Okay, or you can skip in for now.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Ganser?
If you're there, Tom, you're muted. You there, Tom?
Jaclyn, can we unmute Tom or no? For him, I think he's still muted.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next announcements and recognitions, we have none. Student reports for the first time in a long time. The Whitewater High School Student Council report. Casey Corolo, Ms. Corolo, are you here?
I'm here, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me. Again, I'm speaking on behalf of the Whitewater High School Student Council. So I'm going to start off with Lincoln Elementary School. Lincoln is excited to have students back in person. They celebrated by playing their theme song, "We Are Family," wearing their Lincoln apparel in blue and white, and teachers welcoming students back with posters in excitement. They continue to ensure they are doing their best at practicing all the safety guidelines so they can stay learning at school. Student leaders are working on the newspaper called "The Panda Express" and keeping everyone up on current Lincoln happenings. They're also working on their in-house yearbook production, and spring pictures are coming up in March. They continue to come together as a school community with their virtual all-school assemblies. Their last one, they played "Virtual Minute to Win It" and had a blast. While school looks different, they are very happy to be back in action. All right, going to move on to Lakeview. While the Lakeview staff and families have done a great job of adjusting to their virtual learning routines, they are happy to have the children back at school. Teachers are working hard to complete assessments needed for semester progress reports while students are again settling into routines and appreciating the interactions with their peers and the adults. Despite all that is different in this school year, students are loving being outside and playing in the snow at recess. Seeing the smiling faces without the masks at recess is the highlight of the teacher's day. All right, final elementary schools, Washington. Washington welcomed back students to in-person learning on January 18th with lots of smiles found throughout the hallways. The Eagle Day Assembly will take place at the end of this week, highlighting the trait bravery. All right, on to the middle school. The middle school students returning to in-person learning, I'm sorry, they returned to in-person learning last week. Things went quite well and they enjoyed being back with their friends. Here are some of the upcoming activities that the middle school students are looking forward to. Athletic Director and seventh teacher Mike Stutzman has come up with a schedule that allows all the sports to take place at the middle school, even the ones that were missed. Associate Principal Ben Holesman has started another club that's already shown high interest with the students called the Slot Car Club. It's based off their previous STEM club and allows for students to design race courses and build race cars. French teacher Julie Tremel has started a new French club that meets after school from 3:20 to 3:50 PM on the first and third Thursdays of the month. Student Council supervisors, seventh grade teachers Carrie Fero and Katie Montemuro, along with the student council, will be running Winter Fest next week, which gives staff and students breaks from the blah days of winter. Advanced learner paraprofessional Ms. Kyle oversees the Battle of the Books and the virtual spelling vocabulary bee, I'm sorry, virtual spelling and vocabulary bee, so students are signing up for that. Mr. Fontaine wants you guys to be ready for the update for next month. All right, at the high school. It was a long time coming, but the high school welcomes students back in person on January 18th. It was so nice to see the hallways and classrooms filled with students, even though not everyone has decided to come back for face-to-face instruction. As for teachers, they have gone above and beyond the call of duty during the pandemic and are providing instruction via the live stream and face-to-face. The athletic teams are winding down in terms of the winter season and are now battling for postseason competition. Most recently, athletic teams have been able to have two family members per athlete at sport contests in person instead of watching on YouTube. Looking ahead, today was the first day of second semester, and they are hoping that they can begin to have a sense of normalcy in terms of classes and extracurriculars. Coming up shortly, they will begin class selections for the 2021-2022 school year, as well as hopefully get into the celebrations and recognitions of the class of 2021. However, before they get there, they will continue their focus, as it has been all year, one day at a time. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you guys are all updated on the schools.
Thank you, well done.
That was lovely, thank you.
And Casey is also one of our fantastic female student athletes who I love screaming for from my den, and I cannot wait to see her again this week. Thanks for all your hard work, Casey.
All right, public comments. Non-agenda items, citizens may speak regarding items not on the agenda under public comments, but no school board action will be taken. Issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Items on the agenda, citizens may speak regarding specific items on the agenda. At the time the board discusses that item, participants are allotted a three-minute speaking period. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on a non-agenda item? I don't think we explained this, but we've been through it before, you have to raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the special reports and/or action. First is establishing the 2021 or 21-22 regular and special education open enrollment space limitations. Lenora Heim, are you here?
Yes, hi, good evening. So, this is something that we do every year in January. The school boards across the state are charged with deciding if they would like to open up space for open enrollment or not. Historically, our school district has had no limits for regular education students, and that's our recommendation again tonight. We do, however, have recommendations related to special education-related services. So what I put together for you to kind of get a sense of what that recommendation is is just a very simple chart that shows us for each of the areas we provide special education and what our current amount of students per staff is. So for example, if you look at the part that's on the screen right now that Jaclyn has up there for us, it says that we currently have 209 speech and language students, that's that golden color, and then in the middle, the blue color says, "Next year, looking at all of our students, taking account of who's graduating, who's coming in, we're anticipating that to be 210 students needing those services." And our enrollment cap is this 192 that's in purple. And why we chose that cap is that it puts us at an average of 38 speech and language students per speech and language pathologist. And if we were to go over that number or get much higher than that number, we would be recommending hiring additional speech and language pathology staffing. So we're trying to make our recommendation based upon not needing to hire more staff or not needing to incur more cost.
Lenora, but the number of students coming in is just an educated guess, correct?
Yes, that's a really good point. So they asked us to do this in January and guess who we'll have on our third Friday in September. And we are a school district that has a lot of move-in and move-out of students and a lot of move-in and move-out of students with IEPs. We're guessing, based on, you know, basically my 12 years in this role, we're guessing about how many three-year-olds might qualify for speech services. We're looking at who we know is going to graduate, we're looking at our movement over the years, and so we're putting down the most educated guess we can, but that's a really good point, Tom. It's not perfect, it's just based on some data over the years. And so occupational therapy and with physical therapy, you'll see with occupational therapy, we now have two occupational therapists, so we have a little bit of room if someone comes in with that need, we would say yes and admit them in. Physical therapy, we only have a half-time staff member, we definitely would need to increase staffing if we had more students open and enroll in. Jaclyn, if you would go down to the next part of the slide there, please. You will see in the next, if you go all the way down to the next little graph on there would be, thank you so much. So this is our special education caseloads with our special education teachers, and so they serve students with a variety of needs, they might have a lot of different labels, other health impairment, learning disability, autism, all those different categories, but this is what is on their caseload numbers. So for example, the high school right now has 94 students, we're anticipating 95 next year when we look at who's graduating and our eighth graders coming up, and we have enrollment cap of 90. So right now, unless that number changes, we would be limiting or saying no to special education students moving into the district at the high school level. At the middle school level, we have a little bit of space currently right now. Elementary level, it's really, we would be checking the number when anyone opened and rolls, we're really close to that number. In early childhood, we have a little bit of space at this moment as well, too. What's really important, why we do it based on per FTE, per full-time teacher, is because if something happens through budget cuts or through retirements or other ways, and we don't have the exact same number of staffing, we can go back and look at what is our ratio right now and figure out what, kind of what that recommendation is. So you'll see that in my suggested motion for the board, that it's based on what FTE we have and how many students we have at the exact same time when the student requests open enrollment.
So, Lenora, what's the basis for determining what the appropriate number is per FTE?
Oh, that's a really, really good question. So on this thing I put in parentheses, we know what we're basing it on, like at the elementary level, 14 FTE per average. We actually, I have that data from the other directors in the neighboring school districts, so from Jefferson, from, you know, county, Rock County, Walworth County, we looked at that, and we looked at kind of what that estimate was, and then looked at historically kind of what we've had there. So that's how we came up with that average for what it is per FTE. No two caseloads are exactly the same, some students have more needs than others, but this average seems to have worked out well for us. So that's what happens, what I'm suggesting you guys adopt, is that we would look at what's our staffing, how many students per staff, and we'd look at that at the moment the student requests open enrollment, and if we are under that average per staff, we would be saying, yes, come on in. If we're over that, we would be saying, no, we don't have space. Otherwise, we'd have to hire additional staffing in order to take the student in. We have hired a couple of more special education teachers in the last year, and so this is the first time we actually do have space at some levels. Historically, we have had pretty high caseloads, and we've just basically been closed due to space limitations for special education. So it'll be a little bit different, we will be with open arms welcoming in students at different levels and, you know, and different needs to the district with this plan.
Lenora, so the number of students per FTE seems to be determined by sort of what the norms are in the area, not based on recommendations of a professional organization or something else?
Yeah, we've looked at that. Professional organizations, their limits are all over the place. I've seen professional organizations say speech teachers should have no more than 25, I don't know any, recommend any one in the area that's like that, and I've had others do all the way up to, you know, 60 on there. So the professional organizations kind of are all over the place, so we've really looked at what, you know, not just what's in the area, but over the years, what has been reasonable for our staff to handle and do a very high-quality job. What's interesting about it, though, is even though these are numbers, there's actually children behind the numbers, and we've found that in recent years, unfortunately, there's a lot more mental health need among our students, and so sometimes one or two students can take up a huge, significant amount of time on a teacher's caseload because their needs are so severe right now. So there is some argument for even lowering them from what I have on here, but, you know, this is my recommendation as far as moving forward, that mental health be so, just truly can't be ignored. This year, our staff is having to service students on their caseload that are in a virtual model, or that are in an in-person model, or that have moved between. And so every time we do that, that typically means we need to have another IEP meeting, set up another plan, set up another, you know, goals and things that are appropriate for that environment, that educational setting. So our spec ed team is working really hard this year, I'm very proud of them, but it has been a really difficult year. If every year was like this year, I would be recommending less per, less per teacher, so. Other questions? That's a really good questions, really good questions you've had, Mr. Gaines.
I'm assuming that the special education open enrollment, that it's, once the student comes in and open enrolled into the district at fifth grade, they can stay through 12th. I'm wondering, when you mentioned numbers at each, at the high school, for example, I think it was 95, how many of those are open enrolled as you're planning for next year? How many not coming in open enroll, but have been open enrolled previous years and they're still with us?
Yeah, I have a two-part answer to your question. So we have very few that are open enrolled to us that came to us with a special education label, almost none. We have had several students that are open enrolled to us that at one point, we as a school district, our parents have referred for special education and then they've qualified. Once a student open and rolls with us, we've never said no to them, they're ours forever once they're our student. And so even if they've become a student with an IEP, or, you know, or they came to us with one, there's a few examples of that over the years, they're with us forever all the way out. So it's very few open-rolled students to us with IEPs, that number is about five or six, I'd have to double-check that to get you the exact number, but it's definitely less than 10 total.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. So I don't really have anything else to present on that, other than just to make sure your questions are answered, and then right here, what's in front of you on the screen is outlined what my recommendation is for setting those space limitations for open enrollment for the 21-22 school year.
And I just want to make it clear that this is only for open enrollment, any student who moves in is a resident student, and this has nothing to do with that, correct?
Yeah, absolutely correct, yes. If you are a resident student in our school district, you live within our school district boundaries, whatever your needs are, we will meet those needs, and of course, you are welcome no matter what it is that you need, but that's a very good point. Open enrollment is just a student that resides in another school district, and they're asking permission to stay residing in the other school district but attend our schools.
Any other questions for Dr. Heim? I guess, Lenora, so historically, has there been an increase in the number of students who have wanted to open enroll but were denied it because of this?
Not really the last couple of years. When we used to be the home district or the, you know, the base district for Jedi Virtual School, we would have students with special needs from all over the state request open enrollment, and that could be a little bit difficult because they wanted to be virtual, and maybe they lived up in Hayward, Wisconsin, and they wanted to have special education aid times, speech services, and other things. So that was really difficult when we were the home district for that. But as far as resident schools, it's very few that ask in each year. The most asked we get actually are related to Lakeland School in Walworth County. We have had a few asks if students wanted to open enroll and go to Lakeland School.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, then I'll make the motion, we approve the space limitations for open enrollment applications, applicants for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Second, Ganser. Is there any further discussion? Jaclyn?
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lenora.
Thank you.
Next is exploration of athletic program improvements, is that you, Caroline?
That is me, can you hear, can you hear me and can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, excellent. Well, this evening, I'm presenting on a special, kind of a special request regarding, to consider regarding our athletic program for the 21-22 school year. I'm an advocate for K-12 educational-based athletics. I believe that the court, the track, the gym, the pool, the ice rink are extensions of our classroom. They offer one of the best tests and locations to support students in learning the power of team about communication and determination. Our society is struggling with divisiveness, anger, and tension, and frequently, the students do not have the opportunity to experience or practice things that are positive when they leave school grounds. As educators, it is necessary for us to create these opportunities in which students can practice and teach and learn from the classroom to these extensions. So I'd like to talk to you just a little bit about, I've been here now six months, and these, some observations that I've had, and what I'm really requesting tonight is that I have permission to move forward with looking into this consideration further. So what I can tell you right now, as far as our athletic program, is that currently, our middle school and high school are not on the same conference. So when I say they are a conference mismatch, our middle school programming, seventh and eighth grade only, is in the SLC, Southern Lakes Conference, and our high school is in the RVC, the Rock Valley Conference. And so when our kids are beginning to learn all those skills that they learn as athletes with their peers, they are then put into a new conference at the high school level. And we have some options to consider with that.
And Caroline, can I add that the Girl Swim is also not in Rock Valley?
That is true. That's a little bit more about opportunities within Rock Valley, but I would agree with you that Girl Swim could also be considered for alignment, and that's something I was hoping to do tonight, is to get feedback on other things you want to make a part of this. So thanks, Tom. We currently do not have elementary intramural programs, and so when I look at and talk about access, I have a fourth grader, I have the option to pay for programs in our community, and not everyone can afford that option. And those programs and team and club sports can be expensive, and currently, our families do not have the option within our school system. Many surrounding programs offer an intramural option beginning in fifth grade, and that's something that I'd like to begin considering. Our sixth-grade teams have intramural programs only, so where many school systems are starting competitive play, and again, it's about building healthy sports and teams, we do not start until the seventh grade for that, for that option. The other piece I'd really like to kind of look into is us looking at mentor support programs. And my last bullet is really about creating a comprehensive program, and having mentor supports at each level really does that. So do our students at the high school reach down to our middle school students to recruit them and teach them healthy skills as the older students? And the same thing for the middle school, how can they reach down to our elementary students and be mentoring and supporting them at a different level? So what I'm asking tonight, I don't have a lot of details for you, what I'm really asking tonight is approval to move forward with the ability to just research and bring this information to you for what our asks are for our athletic program. And again, that is reviewing the additional availability of teams in our conference in the middle school, sixth-grade level, consideration of fifth-grade intramurals, the option to develop our true program where we have mentoring concepts through five through 12, and really reviewing our athletic director role. We anticipate having a retirement this school year of our really amazing middle school athletic director, and what will that look like for us then, K-12, so that we can have a comprehensive program? Do you have any things that you'd like to see me add? I know Tom mentioned the consideration of our swimming program and looking into that conference.
Caroline, I'll just say, oh, sorry, that, this is, I really appreciate this, I think it would really help, you know, those healthy habits and all of that, and I appreciate the emphasis on intramurals younger because there is a, like, scheduling and cost prohibitive piece to it. And then I think if we do the mentoring program right, it would really help ease some anxiety between those transitions to the different buildings that can be really sort of upsetting, and unnecessarily so, because we've got such great staff and teachers sort of help with that, but, you know, it's different if you feel like you have a friend already in the building. So I don't have anything to add except for kudos, I think this is a really nice thing, and I appreciate your bringing it forward.
I guess, I would add also that it needs some looking at, and Caroline, I know you and I have talked about it, just so everybody knows, a little historic here, the middle school did have some intramurals at the time, ran out of money, also ran out of people who could run them. We also had a rocky time back when club sports started in the community, and there were some conflicts with school and club sports, and you alluded to that. Sometimes it became those who could and those who couldn't afford, and I like the idea that, taking a look at that. And I hope our club parents will buy into this to help the schools. We helped the club sports a few years ago, we actually paid for a lot of the club football program for a while, and they helped us a lot in basketball and those sorts of things. So there's a lot of overlapping and interconnected things here that really go together, and I hope we have community people who will join your exercise here in trying to pull the whole thing together, and I'm sure there will be a lot. One comment about the middle school athletic conference, I have a soft spot for that. That conference was put together because of distance and because we had a lot of people who believed in middle school concept of athletics. And I hope those folks are still sticking together and the principals are still talking together about that. I'm not so concerned, so concerned, middle schools in the same conference as the high school, and part of that is because our high school conferences changed a lot over the years, whereas our middle school folks, they understand the competition with that age kid, so. Good luck with that, I hope people will join you in that, exploring it, and you've got my support to see what we can do to pull together there. And please ask if you want some history, there's a lot of history with the middle school in particular, and how it fits with the high school and some of the intramurals.
My impression is that what you're describing would in fact extend somewhat the responsibilities of athletic director for K-12. So it would be, it would be asking more of that person in that role.
I guess I would confirm that, Tom, that I would like to find out if it's possible for that person to really help us create a comprehensive program.
Kind of along those lines, I, first of all, I totally support this endeavor, I think this is a really good idea. Just the many, the different dimensions here, I think are all a good part of Just the many, the different dimensions here, I think, are all a good part of a comprehensive, uh, uh, a look at this and, uh, and I think would really benefit the district if we could align these things more and, uh, get, get more in line with, uh, you know, club sports outside, outside the districts, uh, you know, purview or whatever. I am concerned who's going to be helping you with this. This seems like a lot of, uh, a lot of work for one person. Do you have your team helping you or is this a, is this just your thing?
Well, um, with your permission tonight, I'd like to get a team together. We need to, if we were looking at, um, intramurals, it would involve elementary principals. Um, I've worked with the district leadership team at this point to really just have discussions about options. Um, I've worked with the athletic director and Mike Levinburg, the principal at the high school. Um, Chris and the entire district leadership team is really aware and they would need to be a part. Um, and I think are all very supportive of, of, you know, next steps. With permission, then we could bring in further, um, kind of opinions on, uh, coaching and, um, getting, um, a deeper feedback there. Is there anyone else that you think should be involved? Maybe parents.
I think pretty much covered it there. I mean, unless you, unless you want to bring in, uh, you know, people that are running club sports in the community at this point, but, uh.
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing it to us, you know, it's always important that we're informed, but I see nothing here that you need our permission to do. I just proceed as, as you see best.
Pete?
I, I agree with that, Casey. I was, and I was trying to get in there a little earlier. The idea of, uh, being in one conference, I think, is a good idea. Uh, and the fact that there are student athletes then would be, uh, playing with the people that are going to be playing against in high school. Uh, it's like a whole, um, they, they become friends, in fact. Uh, if I remember, I had the same thing with my family and, uh, they became good friends from other schools that were in the same conference. And I, I think that might be when you go through the research in that, I hope it comes to the point where we were in the same conference. Now I realize there might be outliers like the swim team. Thank you.
As an old coach, I would love to see swimming put in there too, but I know we can, there's only so many dollars, uh, we can put in there, but that's personal opinion.
Well, Steve, I think the issue is there's only so many pools.
Yeah, a buck or two, yes.
I'm sorry, I was not, I was thinking of the swimming team, high school swim team, to try and get them realigned back into. And I guess it's because there's lack of competition. I don't, we'll see.
All right, I taught middle school or coached middle school swimming for many years and, uh, that really does something for a high school team.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Well, I would say then proceed as you see best. Next is the personnel report. First up is a resignation. Trying to find this here.
Yes, uh, I can speak to that. Um, Carissa Henderson is a food service aide. Um, she is resigning effective January 22nd.
All right, then I'll make the motion. We approve the resignation of Carissa Henderson, Food Service Aide, Washington, effective January 22nd, 2021.
Take it.
Any discussion? Jaclyn?
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganzer?
Yes.
Dud?
Yes. Uh, next is an FTE increase, the English Language Arts at the high school.
Yeah, I can also speak to this. Uh, you may recall Anna Los requested a leave of absence, um, for the last board meeting. So she'll be out the rest of the school year. So we are able to get coverage internally, um, by increasing her from a point five to a point six for the rest of the year.
So what, what does that do actually? Is it a class or?
Yep, that basically adds one class.
Anyone have any other questions on that? Then I'll make the motion that we increase the FTE of Elizabeth Miller from point five to point six for the 2021 school year.
I can.
Right? Anyone else?
I second it. Cover.
Jaclyn?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganzer?
Yes.
Dud?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Next up is the employment, an additive of a head boys tennis coach, head tennis coach, boys, I'm not sure, but anyway.
Yes, Casey, um, Justin is on the call, our athletic director, and he's done a lot of work to make sure these are in place. So if we can make sure he's unmuted, he'd like to speak on these two hires.
Am I here?
There he is.
All right. Uh, really excited about the next two hires. Uh, as everybody knows, it's really important to have our head coaches preferably be teachers in the district. And our next two are, um, Baron West is our business teacher up at the high school. Uh, he did a great job as an assistant coach in our, in our shortened fall season with the girls tennis team. Uh, and then this boys job opened up and he stepped right up and was, uh, ecstatic and ready to go. So Baron is going to be our head tennis coach, uh, come spring. And he'll also be an assistant in the, uh, girl's season as well. So he is a big part of our tennis program moving forward.
Great, then I'll make the motion. We approve the employment of Baron West, the head boys tennis coach.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Jaclyn?
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganzer?
Yes.
Dud?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right, next is the head girls soccer coach.
Maddie Blaine, who's also a teacher in the district. She is at the middle school. Uh, Maddie just absolutely blew us away with her interview. Uh, she's a lifelong soccer enthusiast, uh, played college soccer. And basically, as soon as she was done playing college soccer, she got right into coaching. Uh, she's coached anywhere from U-12 all the way up to U-19 on the boys and the girls side. So, uh, we are really excited for Maddie to come in. I think she's going to be a, a shot in the arm for us and really help with our numbers and, uh, be a, a breath of fresh air for that girls soccer program.
All right, then I'll make the motion. We approve the employment of Madeline Blaine, the head girls soccer coach.
Second, Keenbaum.
Any other discussion? Jaclyn?
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganzer?
Yes.
Dud?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Justin.
All right, can we act on the, uh, high school person? I don't think so.
We took that off the agenda.
He may not have been here.
Yes.
Yes.
Even though you said yes, I'm not sure you were here for that, so. This is the district administrator update.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like to first start by honoring, um, a hometown hero, really proud of Stanibel Fox Simes. Um, Stanibel is one of our seventh grade students. Um, and, um, she has been honored as a Whitewater United Lives True Hometown Hero. She was nominated for raising $2,200 as well as boxes of toiletries for the Bethel House. She has researched and spread awareness about homelessness in Wisconsin. So we're really proud to call her our student. Okay. Well, we have returned January 18th. Now we're going on week two to in-person learning. And, um, the welcome at Lincoln was fantastic. Our panda friend was outside, um, welcoming and greeting kids and, um, bringing some of us to tears with just, um, teachers being so excited to have our students back to school. Um, to just give you a little bit of a summary, 78% of our families returned their students face to face at the elementary level. At the middle school level, 73% of families returned face to face. Um, and 19% of families opted for a new support mode that we are offering with our own teachers as a virtual model. I'm really proud because this was created as a result of student and family need. And our teachers came through and made this happen. So a total of 92% of the middle school of students are being served by our own teachers. At the high school, 69% are face to face. And again, the high school made the exact same thing happen. They are offering a virtual model with our own teachers. 18% of families chose that. So 87% of our families at the high school are being served by our teachers. Thank you to our dedicated teachers who are making this happen. In February, um, I mentioned regarding athletics, but I also would like, will be doing a presentation on the initial steps I am recommending for long-term recruitment and retention of our families. So just to kind of preface that, some of the things that you'll see me talk about will be updating our website. Our social media presence. Um, we opened a Facebook account this year and, um, I'm, I'm a shameless promoter. Uh, we have, um, 595 likes this year and we're hoping to get much higher because we know we have many more students. Uh, we're using our annual report as a retention or as a recruitment tool. And so that's something that you'll see how we talk about next month. Um, how can we retain our existing students? Uh, in that process, I'd like to look at our facility needs and then four K, four K recruitment and retention because that's where we start with our families. Uh, we're going to have a big push this year and I'll talk about that in a moment with four K. So there's that website that we're working on, um, we would like to come back to in February with my presentation with some uh, quotes on what it will take to get our website updated, updated, a little bit more user friendly. Right now it's pretty laborious just to do updates that we need. Um, and families have a hard time using it on their social or on their, um, devices. So we want to make it a little more device friendly. Um, one of our other goals is to get on Instagram this year. So we've gotten on Facebook, uh, this school year and we're moving towards having an Insta account. Again, um, I shared with the board and then I'll be sharing with our community soon, our new version of our annual report. So it will be a surprise to our community. And, uh, we are going to be doing, um, welcoming our future whipits is what we're calling them at the high school. So, um, our four K, uh, recruitment and new to the district kindergarten families have been initiating the registration process. It will start virtually and then be completed in person on March 3rd, which will be our registration day. And we'll welcome our, uh, future whipits to the high school to finish their registration for that process. All right, Thursday, January 14th and 15th, um, Matt and I delivered goodies as thank yous um, to our crossing guards and our road crews who I think are going to be very busy tonight. Um, we thanked, uh, Nelson's Bus Service, uh, the town of Richmond, La Grange, Whitewater, the city of Whitewater Road Crews and the Nelson's Bus Crews. Okay, I just want to take pause to, um, recognize the beauty of some of the donations that we've had this month. Um, you can see a number of donations to Faridermis, 50 from Whitewater Family Dentistry, 100 from Ketterhagen Motors, 200 from Key Command Foods, 500 from Lavelle Industries. Um, and the next category, I just really see this as a way that our family, our community pulled together. We had a family whose house, um, burned down and 45 donors donated to that after, um, following, uh, newspaper articles and Facebook posts that were made in hopes to support this family. $4,975 were raised by our own Whitewater community. Um, housing was provided, bedding, backpacks, shoes, clothes, and the family is so very thankful. Um, but it truly shows what our community is all about. And then finally, I'd like to thank the Lakeview PTA, 2,000, almost $454.80 uh, for the refurbishing of the Lakeview handbells. 20-year-old anniversary of the bells just occurred. So the amount was also matched by the Whitewater Music Parents Association. Thank you so much. And that's it for my report this evening.
Hey, thank you very much. We'll move on to the business office reports.
Correct.
Go ahead. You can take it all the way, Matt.
Oh, it's good. I'll just share my screen quickly. Okay, hopefully that worked. Um, Andy is here. First off, to talk about some technology purchases.
Hi there, everybody. Um, we're talking about two purchases this year. Um, normally we do these purchases a little bit later, um, towards, uh, May or June. However, with the supply shortages, uh, they expect that most purchases will take about six to eight months to be delivered for Chromebook orders. So we're trying to get a jumpstart on that. Um, and pretty much every vendor we've talked to has said that that's a good idea because they'll have some stock coming in in March. Um, and then after that, it is a waiting game until it's shipped from the vendor. So we solicited a number of bids, um, from different partners that we work with. Um, the current one that we are recommending going with is the Lenovo 100E. Um, these are $183 apiece. We're looking at getting 400 of them. Um, and this will be coming from Insight. This is the same model that we bought this year. Um, the device has what's called an auto expiration policy with Google. So basically, how long it will receive updates from Google, um, until June of 2026, which will give us five years is what we need out of our devices. Um, this was the cheapest device that we ever quoted. Um, they ranged anywhere from 183 up to about $250. Um, the second part of the purchase is purchasing Chrome licenses. So this is the license that we require to manage the devices out of Google Admin Console. Um, which allows us to push updates, uh, push policies, restrict what kids do, uh, things like that. Uh, they're required for every device. We need one license per device. Um, last year, we actually purchased enough licenses for two years because Google was slated to increase the price by $10 in March of 2020. Um, per license, that was extended and they pushed that till 2021. And last year, we actually bought additional devices for our kindergarten through second grade students. So we used up that stock that we had actually pre-purchased, uh, the year before. So now we're looking at buying 1,200 Chrome licenses. This will be actually enough, or should be enough to get through the next three years of purchases, um, of Chromebooks. So we're looking at by using 400 for this year, um, and then 400 next year and 400 the year after that. And the goal there is to save $10 per license, um, over the next three years.
Andy, this is Tom. I was somehow surprised that licenses, the cost for licenses varied from different vendors. I would have guessed it was a set fee.
Yeah, so what I, from what I understand, it's a matter of what their profit margin they want. Uh, so Google probably sells them for around, I, I would guess, 20 to $22. Um, and then the, the vendors would sell it from there.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
You can buy directly from Google?
Unfortunately, we cannot.
Andy, this is Steve.
Um, yep.
Have you purchased from these two vendors before? Are you satisfied with, with them?
Yep, so we've purchased from both vendors before. Um, Insight, we purchased, I think, two years ago, um, and everything's worked out well.
Okay.
And who's slated to receive the 400 Chromebooks?
Sure, so it'll follow our normal replacement cycle. Um, so what that looks like is we put, um, all freshmen will get a new device. Uh, we have not done that this year yet. We have the devices ready to go. Um, we're planning on rolling that out in the next couple of weeks. Uh, but these will go to the next year's freshmen, so the current eighth graders. And then the other half of the devices would go to the four, there, there's about half of the carts out of the fourth and fifth grade. Um, that would get replaced and then those ones that we replace go to the sixth grade class. So we can. So we kind of do a shuffle of all of our devices.
So Andy, are we consistent with the one-to-one ratio for our students?
Yes, so right now, we're one-to-one K through 12. Our normal replacement cycle right now allows us to replace devices for grades three through 12. So one of the things we'll be talking about over the budget cycle is how do we incorporate some of that funding for K through two, or what will that model look like?
Any other questions for Andy? Then I'll make the motion. We approve the purchase of 400 Lenovo 100E Chromebooks from Insight for $73,200, and 1,200 Chrome licenses from Trax for $27,960.
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Andy, it just goes, perhaps we can't say thank you enough to you and your team for sort of managing all of this. We've depended on your service and your team's work so much this year, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate your guys' support and all the administrative support as well.
My understanding is that the market is very difficult for these kinds of acquisitions.
I'm sorry, what was that, Tom?
That the market right now is very difficult for getting Chromebooks and things like that.
Correct. Most of the technology that we're ordering has a wait time of up to six or eight weeks at the earliest.
All right, Jaclyn?
Jaclyn, are you muted? We can't hear you, Jaclyn.
We need Jaclyn.
The irony of this, a technology motion.
About the clerk.
She doesn't look muted.
Yeah, if Jaclyn can't get on, then Steve, you're going to have to call the roll on this.
I'm calling. Okay, Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Chud?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ryan, yes.
Thank you.
Ganser, absolutely.
Ganser. He went on my screen.
All right, just make sure that Jaclyn gets the results. Hopefully you can, hopefully Jaclyn has not gone for good. Next up is the food service equipment purchase.
Yes, Lisa Greif, our amazing food service supervisor, applied last fall for a equipment replacement grant through the DPI. And she found out she was awarded a $25,000 grant to replace two convection ovens. Just, so she's proposing to purchase two larger DFG 100ES DBLs pictured there. So these will be replacing two 30- or more-year-old units at the high school. So as part of the process, she's listed offers from three vendors, Kestnik, Seltzer, and Kavanaugh. We're recommending going with Kestnik. And in the motion, there is the caveat that DPI also does need to approve of this purchase.
So move to approve the purchase of the two double-stack convection ovens from Kestix for the amount noted and pending DPI approval.
Second.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I'll second. Thanks, Casey, sorry.
And so I think you said that I was looking at something else, but that the remainder, it comes from the food service budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yep, the remaining $6,000 will come from accumulated fund balance. Yep.
And Matt, I saw something that suggested that there was sort of a change in where these units would be from the middle school to the high school, or something like that?
Yeah, I think we were originally slating them to go to the middle school, but the greater need is at the high school.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jaclyn, you there yet? I can read your lips. Steve, you're going to have to take it away again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Steve, thanks.
Ganser?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right.
Next up is just an update, and I guess updated action on the chiller replacing at the high school. So back in November, the board approved updating the 25- or more-year-old chiller that's at the high school. Total Mechanical was selected. And as they were getting everything in order to actually order the unit from the manufacturer, they realized that they had quoted an oversized unit. So instead of a 300-ton unit, which is what we approved, a 200-ton unit is what would be more appropriate. So when we found out about this earlier this month, we opened it up to all of the other vendors, the other two vendors, who submitted offers asking if they wanted to update their proposal. So Total Mechanical's new updated price is $267,800. Illingworth Killgust did not provide an updated offer. And Aherne actually originally proposed about a 200-ton, 230-ton unit. So their proposal is not changing either.
So are you convinced that the 200-ton is the correct size unit for us?
Yes, I asked them multiple times, and they said they've done the math many times, and they are comfortable with it being 200-ton.
And Matt, is there any easy way to explain what 200-ton means versus 300-ton?
Basically, it'd be the output of it, or how much space you have to cool would dictate how much tonnage you need.
Good, that helps. Any other questions for Matt? So I will make the motion. We approve the purchase of the resized chiller for the high school from Total Mechanical for the sum of $267,800.
Second, Coburn.
And I would just say that, you know, if this was totally on their own, it was, I commend them for correcting it, so.
Yes, I agree.
And I'm also want to focus on the notion that, I mean, is suggested elsewhere of our efforts to monitor the condition of these units in a way that sounds like it's been a little bit problematic in the past. Anyone else? Jaclyn?
Doug?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Okay, while we're on the topic of mechanical functions at the high school, just a quick update on the second chemist boiler at the high school. You'll recall, we replaced the heat exchanger in the 3,000 BTU boiler. That was completed late December, early January. After that was completed, we opened up the 4,000 BTU, so the second chiller that's at the high school, and found a similar issue. So I've got some pictures. Hopefully you're able to see. So a similar issue where the support bar is bent due to some sort of heat release in the unit. But a different, I guess, occurrence here is that the top of the heat exchanger actually cracked in some areas, which is not something that we experienced with the 3,000 BTU. So today, McKinstry, who oversaw the original install of that boiler, arranged a phone conference with the supplier and Illingworth Killgust in the district. So where we left that conversation is we're not taking action right now. We're not authorizing a replacement. After it was opened up, we were able to get it closed back up and make it operable for right now. The supplier is going to do some more checking with the manufacturer, and we're going to schedule a follow-up meeting later this week to see what they find out.
So we have, is the other boiler installed?
Yes, the smaller boiler, the 3,000 BTU, is fixed and operating perfectly.
Is that enough by itself to power or to provide whatever they need at the high school?
Yeah, currently, yes. I think if temperatures get to about zero or below zero, then the other one would kick in.
And it runs if it has to?
Yes, yep, so it is put back together, and it can turn on and operate if needed.
So it's not dire straits yet, but we need to address this.
Yes.
All right, well, I guess, keep us informed. I mean, if it, I mean, if it comes up that there's no response from either the manufacturer or the supplier, I mean, I'd assume this would probably come under the emergency purchase that we need to fix it. I mean, I'm not sure we should wait till the end of February?
Yes, yep, I agree.
All right. So no action at this time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for Matt on this?
Okay, seen none. I'll move on to the OPEV valuation. Generally accepted accounting standards require that we value our post-employment benefit plan once every two years. I solicited offers from three different actuaries for this next valuation. Key benefit concepts, who we've used for a number of years, Lauterbeck and Amen and Milliman. And I was incredibly shocked at the pricing that I got back from Lauterbeck, Lauterbeck and Milliman. I think I'd even included in the actual board docs what the pricing was two years ago. So Milliman is who I recommend going with for a bid of $4,400. Two years ago, their offer was $12,000. And I was just shocked. So as soon as I got the proposal, I called the Milliman representative and just tried to get a better understanding of why this is. So twofold is that the market is a little bit more competitive, or maybe they're hungry for more business, as well as our plan, our old plan, used to allow retirees to stay on health insurance for a number of years. And that requires a special calculation that's pretty intensive. And all of those individuals are no longer on the plan. So that saves a significant amount of time on the valuation.
Matt, I guess my question is, for things like this, these costs are required by state statute for these accounting examinations?
Yes. Well, okay, not by, it's not required by law, but it's required by accounting standards.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
Yeah, is part of the lower cost because we are now, we, all the retirees prior to 7/1/14 are no longer on our post-employment benefit plans? So that simplifies the calculations also?
Yes, yeah, that's the main driver of why this is so much cheaper. Yep. So two years ago, we would have started.
So that's related to that, the 2014 thing?
Yes, yep.
That's what it was. Okay, that's what you were just talking about. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so those people have now come off of the plan, so they're along.
And Matt, even seeing the significant difference between the Key Benefits proposal and Milliman proposal is a significant difference?
Yeah, I was really, really surprised. So Key Benefits has been around that same amount for like the last decade. And I guess I would have hoped a more aggressive pricing from them, taking into consideration that those retirees no longer get the health benefit. So I guess perhaps in two years, they will be more aggressive when we bid this back out.
So again, it helped me with this. So this procedure is required at some point for us to make all our statutory requirements for how we deal with the budget for the district?
Yep, so to prepare our government-wide financial statements, they're called, we have to identify a value of our post-employment benefits. And that sits on our financial statements as a liability because that's money we've promised to these people that we haven't funded yet.
Thank you. What else? And I'll make the motion. We approve contracting with Milliman for the post-employment benefits valuation for the sum of $4,400 as presented. Second, Ganser. Further discussion? Jaclyn?
Ryan?
Was that me?
Yep.
Yes.
I need to abstain on this vote.
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Steve, we've always asked that you state a reason.
I need to abstain because I don't know if I'm included on the post-benefits of this or not because I am receiving benefits from the district under the post-employment.
All right, your choice. Thanks for clarifying that. Next is the second Friday of January student count report.
Yes, so this is the second of two official student counts during the school year, first one being the third Friday of September. Second Friday, membership is used for primarily equalization aid, or really just equalization aid for the next school year. So as we're talking about some data, remember that enrollment are the students attending one of our five schools. And membership refers to students living within the boundaries of our district, attending any public school. So when we look at enrollment from September to January, you'll see that it actually decreased by 61 students. However, the tuition and sort of miscellaneous responsibilities we have increased by 63. And what that represents is really Jedi. So Jedi, Jedi students, we pay tuition for, and they are not enrolled in one of our five schools. So that, those students essentially account for the decrease in enrollment. And then I also want to highlight just some open enrollment changes. So starting with third Friday, open enrollment in and out. So in, there were six additions from third Friday, as well as three individuals who are no longer open enrolled in. And then open enrollment out, students increased by 16 between the two count dates. But we also had 17 students who returned to the district between that timeframe. So if you were to look, and I don't have the slide here, but in board docs, there are a couple of reports on membership, so the students living within the district. That was really stable between third Friday of September and the second Friday of January, which is generally a good thing.
Questions on the second Friday of January student count report?
Okay, seen none. We'll move on to the budget development guide for the next fiscal year. In December, I went over the process and assumptions, and mentioned that in January, be coming back to looking for approval. So some of the significant assumptions are the third Friday of September, membership will decrease by a 20 FTE. Just trying to be sort of conservative there, trying for just potential losses in students. But also expecting that our summer school membership will increase to at least 75% of what it was pre-COVID. And those two items combined, we're looking at our revenue limit, will yield a stable revenue limit. So no increase, no decrease there. Also expecting open enrollment ratio to be similar to, that says 1920, but that should be 2021, which was a significant increase compared to prior years. So again, trying to be conservative there, as well as restoring the full contribution to our post-employment benefit trust. And further, this will be the first year of the state biannual budget, which will yield a lot of uncertainty. I would expect no additional state support, including no per pupil revenue limit increase, no additional per pupil aid, and no increase in equalization aids. And equalization will be really difficult to predict, I think, due to declining enrollment that we've been experiencing statewide. And then the final point that I had added is that, as I As I build the base budget, it's going to be presuming that staff will return to their pre-COVID assignments. So basically, they're nineteen twenty assignments.
Matt, just to clarify that final assumption you had on there on that last screen. In the case that an FTE, for instance, was increased to support. Tasks related to COVID, you're assuming that those will then be reduced going into next year, correct?
Yeah, so the base, the base budget, we'll call it, would reflect what that assignment was before this school year. Yes.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Then I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget development guide and assumptions as presented.
Stuart, second?
Anyone else? Jaclyn? Again? No.
Hello?
Yeah.
All right, Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, then one last topic for me this evening. And that is shared LMC specialist services. The Palmyra Eagle Area School District approached us about sharing our LMC specialist. You may recall, I think it was last January. That we had hired a new LMC specialist from Palmyra Eagle, so she's definitely used the district. Board docs contains a proposed agreement that we've been working on. And has been reviewed by PE ASD administration. It would cover wages plus total benefits plus twenty percent administrative costs and overhead. And that would allow us then to contract directly with PE ASD to provide some of these services that they need. They're currently contracting with CISA two, and this would be out of cost savings to them. And then coupled with that in board docs is a memorandum of understanding. With Kathy Retzke, who's the LMC specialist, covering the terms of the agreement. And state law does require that it, that these agreements that are called sixty six oh three oh one agreements be passed by resolution. So there is also a resolution in board docs.
So is is this likely to like increase the hour, even though we're compensated for it? Increase the hours that Ms. Retzke is going to be working?
Yes, so it would not increase her contract, but she would be compensated for the additional time. Yeah.
My question is, does this reduce the amount of services provided to Whitewater Unified School District schools?
It would not substantially, no.
So. What does not substantially mean?
Yeah, so we we did acknowledge in discussing this that there may be times where Kathy. Needs to to talk with administration or work on something with their administration during the day. That maybe not everything can be done outside of contract hours. So we would allow her to do that work. Inside of her contract hours, with the understanding she's not going to be paid extra for that time. But Palmyra Eagle will reimburse us, or will pay us for that time.
So would she be the LMC coordinator for schools in Palmyra Eagle?
Essentially, yes, she would be performing those duties. Yeah. And the estimate, I guess I don't recall if it was in here, but the estimate was ten days of service or about eighty hours. Is what they'd be requesting.
Ten days over what period of time?
A a school year.
Matt, does she have any reservations about doing this?
No, she is totally on board with helping them out.
And just to clarify, we did meet with her and Dr. Kelly Seichter because we wanted to make sure about the. Impact on, again, that question, I think, Steve, you had about the impact for us. And both feel like this is a good plan to both support Palmyra. But also maintain what we expect in our district.
But it sort of strikes me that ten days of service for Palmyra Eagle is pretty minimal over a school year or a semester.
That's what they determined that they needed to just meet the basic requirements. I believe that they have some support. Options in place similar to we do, like paraprofessionals, so she'd be leaving them with expectations and then coming back to us.
Okay, thank you.
What else?
I'm happy to jump in on that. This is Kelly.
Go ahead, Kelly.
They approached Kathy and Kathy was happy to do it. Mostly what they needed support with was paperwork and ordering and a lot of the clerical stuff that's required by standard T from the state. That can get tricky, and they were at a bit of a loss to take care of that. They had less confidence in CISA two's ability to carry through with those duties than they had in Kathy, who had previously done it. So Kathy does get an added stipend for completing those duties. Ten days throughout, not just a school year, but some days over the summer too. And the district gets a little extra. CISA, CISA two had been charging Palmyra Eagle quite a bit for the ten days that CISA two was contributing to their. Standard T compliance and. They're, Palmyra Eagle is actually paying the Whitewater School District less than they were paying CISA two. So Whitewater gets a little bit of money, Kathy gets a little extra money, Palmyra is paying less to Whitewater. For Kathy's services than they were paying to CISA two. So it felt like everybody wins and Palmyra gets. Some services they have confidence in. We were pretty clear on the on the get go that if it. Was any disadvantage to the Whitewater School District at all, we wouldn't support this idea and. Through all our discussions with Palmyra Eagle and with Kathy, we felt. That we could go through with this and that everyone would be pleased with the outcomes.
So the Palmyra Eagle School District will still have. Based on their, on their approach, they will still have support for their students in their elementary. Middle and high school for LMC services?
They will have people on on the ground covering those duties.
Okay.
Kathy will be advising them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I guess I am, you know. As most of us are familiar with their situation, I'm happy we can help them out, so. I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one oh one. Shared LMC specialist services and the related memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second, Ganser.
Anyone else? Jaclyn?
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes approval of the regular meeting, December twenty first, twenty twenty. Minutes approval of the PRC meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Second reading of policies as listed and voucher approval.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second, Ryan.
I guess we'll have to do a roll call, Jaclyn.
And, or Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
All right, unfinished business, we have none. New business, first. Item is consideration of district administrator title change. So. I mean, we we discussed this several times, there was some research done. It appears the title district administrator and superintendent are used interchangeably, and there is no. Specific reason to have one or the other. But kind of aligning with what everyone else calls their. District administrator or superintendent is superintendent, so. It will require mostly changing all our policies. And probably business cards and things like that. I don't know what else, but anyway. That's what's before us.
The rationale is just to align with other districts.
Yes, but also Matt did a little research, more research than anybody else, and. You might mention what DPI committed on that, if you can remember.
Yeah, let me just get there. Yep. Um, let's see. So state statute refers to a school district administrator being the school district superintendent, et cetera. The licensing rules use it interchangeably, the two terms. And there's no requirement that the district employ anybody with this specific title superintendent or district administrator. And typically only someone with the superintendency license would use that title. I'd also looked at if there's a correlation between. Unified school districts using superintendent versus district administrator. And common school districts, and there is no correlation that we're able to find.
Well, Matt, is there any license that specifies district administrator versus superintendent?
If my understanding, the license refers to superintendent.
Okay.
My licensed state superintendent.
That was one of the key thoughts when we were talking about it, that. That it's almost like a district could have a district administrator but not be licensed, and I I don't. Understand that, but it's possible. But since the licensing calls for superintendent, I think we should have changed it. Back to superintendent. It was superintendent from sixty through seventy, nineteen seventy. And then, for some reason, the directories changed according. And they started calling thing ugly superintendent. I mean, from superintendent to district administrator, but there didn't seem to be any action by the board. So this will get a, we, in all our. All of our indications are that we'll have to change every policy, and that's a lot of policy change. Because there's not one word of superintendent on any of our policies, but I think that would be an easy transfer to do. I would recommend we change it to superintendent and have a vote on it.
There will be a.
I move it.
Replace.
I'm sorry, I didn't, who was talking?
That was Tom Ganser. On all the policies, we can do a search and replace on all the documents.
Yeah, yes.
Oh.
I'll second it then.
I I would vote for it, but I still like the term district administrator. To me, it's a connotation that's more important and does a better job than. A superintendent, but I'll vote for it.
Yeah, you know, I thought that too, Steve, but as it turns out, it doesn't have that. That ring to it with other people. They all think superintendent and district administrator, since it's not certified, is kind of a lure. But I, but it could be taken either way.
Well, Jim, if you're willing to do it, I am. I thought you liked district administrator, so.
Yeah, that's.
Interesting conversation, but.
I had to crush everybody.
Yeah, I call the question or whatever that is.
All right, then, Jaclyn?
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
You twisted my arm, yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
This is history in the making.
It is, it really is.
That means like it should be the first female superintendent, is that right?
Yes, you are.
Simply by title, right?
I'm glad we only had one contentious issue on our agenda tonight. So next up is the donation of one thousand four hundred dollars for the WMS Slot Car Club from HSI Rentals. So this is quick, we didn't even know we had the. Slot Car Club until we had our first student report of the year, so. I will move that we accept that donation, a very generous donation from HSI Rentals for the WMS Slot Car Club.
I will second that donation, that motion for the donation. If I could just mention to everyone that we are doing a presentation at the February board meeting, talking about the slot car club and what they'll be doing, and you'll get to see pictures and all the details.
That would be appreciated. Anyone else? Jaclyn?
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Next up is an anonymous donation of one thousand five hundred dollars for the Family Emergency Fund. So.
We accept. Anonymous donation of fifteen hundred dollars for the Emergency Family Fund.
I will second that then. Any other discussion? Jaclyn?
Bob?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
And another donation of five thousand dollars for Faridermis from DPI Robotics League Participant Grant. That's easy to say. Five thousand dollar donation for Faridermis from DPI Robotics League Participation Grant.
Was there a story behind this about the grant? Did I read something about how this grant came about?
Laura Mosbrook may be here tonight.
You know what? I'm not sure of the history on that. If she's not here, we can certainly find out. Oh, yay.
I am here.
Thanks, Laura.
Over at robotics right now. Yeah, the, this was the initial grant that got us started five years ago. DPI, it's a, it's a reimbursement grant through DPI. For high school robotics teams and recently also middle school robotics teams. Basically, you apply for it in the fall, and then you have to submit proof of expenses, and then they will reimburse those expenses. So each year, the amount we get depends on. How many teams apply for it. They basically divide the pool of money between the teams that apply. So five thousand is the maximum, and because of COVID, there are actually less teams applying this year, so we did get the full amount. So this is the first year for the full amount.
Thank you.
So Laura, would you guess that this amount would pretty much cover the cost for those competitions?
Well, we've given Matt a lot of documentation recently of all of our income and expenses. In a typical year, the initial registration fee is five thousand dollars. Plus another four thousand for the next event and another five thousand for Worlds. So in a typical year, no. This year, yes, it will cover our registration.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the donation of five thousand dollars. We approve, we accept the donation of five thousand dollars from DPI Robotics League. Participation, participation grant for Faridermis.
Second, Coburn.
Further discussion? Jaclyn?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
All right, next is the. All right, next is the first reading of the policies as listed there.
Casey, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention this is a, a matching grant as well, so I just want to thank the community businesses and community groups and individuals that have helped fund the matching half of this grant, so it is technically 10,000. So thank you to all of those companies.
Wow, that's great.
So, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you, it's good to know that. So now to the first reading of the policies. I, I don't know what to say about them, there's something in every one of those. I think the most interesting one is the school district legal status, which we said that the title of district administrator and superintendent will be used interchangeably. There it is throughout.
I'd like to change that. I don't think it should be used interchangeably.
Well, I agree, since we just changed it, so.
Change it, yeah, get rid of it.
Wouldn't that allow us to not change all the policies?
It would, but then create confusion in people. If we didn't, if we have all the policies reading district administrator and we call the superintendent superintendent, not district administrator, it leads to a little confusion. I think that's what we've had in the past, where we had it the other way, so I would prefer just to.
Maybe for the nine or 10 people to read the policies on a regular basis.
I, I was gonna say, there's no way that passes the Jim Stewart test. Superintendent, and that's just how it needs to be.
So my, my recollection from the PRC meeting was that we were adding that phrase until we updated every policy, and then at that point, we would remove that phrase.
Well, why don't we leave it in that, then, why don't we say that, Matt? And not be interpreted, you know, not be used interchangeably throughout the board policy. Why don't we just say we'll be doing the terms superintendent will replace district administrator on the, on the policies. And eventually, all district administrator will be deleted from the policies. Something like that. I'm sorry, I should have read that closer. Yeah, going forward, we just make the change.
Yeah. Well, are we gonna try and change this? Do we wanna remove it from being approved or approve it as it is?
The, the term district administrator is all over the other policies too.
It, it's everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other five, or the other four that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah, this is the only one that has anything about it, so, so far.
But it's the first one, it's one of the first ones, so. All policies will be changed, all. Oh, jeez.
Well, do we wanna send it back to the Policy Review Committee?
Yeah, I think so. That seems the cleanest thing. Just send it back to other people.
Gotcha.
It does, because then we don't have to approve something or like squibble with it here, you know?
It's really an administrative thing, so let's just, we'll come up with something to put in the beginning of the policy book. It says that and not in a policy itself.
Yeah, so.
The first sheet of the policy should have that.
Yeah, we can just approve it as the first reading tonight and still just do what we want with it at the.
Amen.
Policy Review Committee, so.
Thanks, Jaclyn.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
School board meetings. You'll be happy to know, we did add an additional school board meeting in the policy, and that's in August, when there's all of the hiring. It's the only change we made was a regularly scheduled meeting in the second week. Second Monday of August. I don't know, I don't have anything to say about the other ones.
No, no, there's the minor changes.
Any questions, anyone? I'll move that we approve the first readings of the policies as presented.
Second, Stewart?
Any further discussion? Jaclyn?
Stewart?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ganser?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, next is the upcoming school and staff calendar review.
Mr. Stewart asked that we discuss this one?
What's that?
Yeah, I, I can give a little bit about this. I know, I know Jim last year wanted us to talk about it before we met next month. And you've got copies of both the twenty-two and also the twenty-two, twenty-three. And both of those are pretty much just extensions of what we've got from this year. And hopefully, we'll be back in the, in the classroom for the next couple of years on, on both of these. I don't anticipate anything coming up that's gonna be any big difference here. And since Wendell's not around anymore, we won't be talking about year round school, so. I, I, what I'm looking at myself is just probably just advancing coming up with the twenty-three, twenty-four, just an extension of what we've got, because we've already approved the next two years. But if there's anything anybody wants to bring up before we meet next month, let us know.
Hey, Steve, this comes up every year, and I, I believe, I'm just gonna bring it up now, Martin Luther King Day, like we say, it's supposed to be like an in-service kind of opportunity, and then, but the kids are off on Friday, which seems slightly awkward. And obvious, I mean, there are those who think that would be a good day to sort of, but what's the rationale there? Is that we, we talk about it in school, and so that's why we don't have Martin Luther King Day?
I know we brought that, yeah, I know we've brought it up many times, and it comes down to basically the semester split with the high school more than anything. And I know when we've had, I know when we've had school on Martin Luther King Monday, I think all of the buildings or most of the buildings have had a Martin, a Martin Luther King recognition. I know the middle school actually does quite a nice assembly. And I think the high school does something too, but that's, yeah, that's something, if, if we can make those dates split, that maybe, maybe we can do that, I don't know.
I was just gonna say that, Kelly, it'd be nice to have the children off on Martin Luther King Day, or at least I, I feel that. Because a lot of folks, parents have off that day already, and then don't have to take another day off later in the week for childcare.
Can I tell you a quick story? When that first, when the Martin Luther King Day was, first became a holiday, this discussion came up at the school board, and the school board thought along the same things that you just mentioned, Jen, that the parents would love to have the children off when most, the university is off. So they would be home with their parents. We had four, four or five calls that night. Why are you not keeping the kids in school? We have a holiday, the parents saying that. They, they really kind of were looking forward to having a day to themselves. And you can't win sometimes, you know, because there were more some the other way, so. It's, I think we've tried to keep it open for a holiday, not a holiday, a holiday for the children. And made it in-service day or some other kind of day for the school.
I guess I would be interested to see just, you know, I don't know how long ago that was, Jim, but if people feel differently, because I, you know, I, yeah, I just, I feel like.
Could be changing.
I mean, yeah, it's a federal holiday and for good reason, I think, and so I just, I don't, Steve, maybe the committee can talk about it at your meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
If we could get.
The semester break is very awkward, right?
Yes, and it's at the high.
And that's the main thing, if we could start school, you know, one week earlier, but that's the problem. We're now mandated that we can't start till September one. But high school and middle school could give us some, some ideas of how they walk, they could split their semesters and have Martin Luther King Monday off. You know, we could work it in there, but that, that's really been the only drawback or the only reluctance to changing that that I'm aware of.
Right.
I guess it would be interesting to know possibly what some of the other surrounding school districts do, because I know some of the surrounding ones have off that day, and I would think they have somewhat similar schedules.
We have a survey that I'll present to the calendar committee, because honoring our African-American families and, and supporting this time was important to many of them. We have a, a committee that actually talks about critical conversations about race, and this is one of our topics. So I do have that information prepared for the calendar committee.
Carolyn, can you share with us, like, what the feelings were?
Sure, so what we asked, Jaclyn and I sent to all the schools was whether they have the day off in order to honor Martin Luther King, if they have the day off to do professional development with staff. And then there was one third one, Jaclyn, and the third one was.
Let me just pull it up real quick.
So it was how they utilize the time to honor him, and the majority of surrounding school districts were actually that they did professional development with their staff on that day. So no school, see that little category, no school for students? So very few school districts surrounding us take the actual holiday. Everybody takes a federal holiday. Column number one. Column number two, we're attend school on MLK Day, but you hold, like we had talked about, you hold, you know, in-service for your students and staff. And then number three, those are the neither, and many of those needers were that they have no school for students, but staff have in, in-service.
And I guess is the in-service like a diversity and inclusion and equity sort of conversation? Like, do we try to link it to that? Because I, I, I understand the interest to try to, like, talk about what the day means, but I, I don't know that, like, people work it in all the time in their classrooms either.
Right, I'd wanna be careful that if that's what we were doing, that that would be the purpose.
Right, right, okay.
So we had planned to talk about that with the calendar committee. And there's also one other thing that we had hoped to discuss about future, looking at, Mr. Levinburg would really like to talk about the way we utilize conferences for high school students and families. We've been pretty traditional in that sense, like, everybody gets the same allotment for conferences. And it really is something that is utilized or needs to be utilized in a different way for high school students and families, so he's gonna be presenting to the calendar committee for a change there.
And Carolyn, I think he also suggested that the conferences at one point happen earlier in the semester, so we can catch some of our sort of more needy students, and I think that's awesome, because to wait until November is just feels like a long time.
I, I think they made that change, actually.
Yeah, okay, we voted on that then at the time.
Yep, that's one that came up last year, and I think that was a really good change.
Yes.
If we're looking at a change like this, I hope we get the input back from Mike before our meeting, so we can take a look at that. And then also, is this something you want us to pursue for twenty-one, twenty-two instead of waiting to the third year?
I would, I mean, I absolutely, I mean, I think it just sends a message that, like, we are trying to do better, like, you know, I, yeah, I like to do it.
Okay, so what we would, we'd alter the board approved calendar then starting next year, if, if that's what we get into then?
If there's a way, I mean, I, I don't wanna, like, mess up people's apple carts too much, but I, I don't know, yeah.
Okay, good. Sarah, you're on that this year. Okay, great. We can talk ahead of time too and make sure we come up with something we can present, so we're not reinventing the wheel then.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the calendar review. All right, we'll move on. Board member requests for future agenda items. Well, I, I have one, even though I get to set the agenda. I'm gonna ask Caroline, I think that we, we saw tonight, our hometown hero has actually done enough of the work that could probably be a report on homelessness. I would like it maybe specific to our district, because didn't we hire a homeless outreach?
We did.
Person, and, and I'm sure Lenora has a, a good handle on it, so I, I would maybe like that to be on the future agenda.
That would be great. We'd love to let you know what we're doing to work on that.
I've got one that I would like just to do soon, and that is, we've talked an awful lot about maintenance things that we're dealing with. And I'm very concerned that so much of this is falling on Matt. That's not his job. He's our business manager, he's not our maintenance supervisor. And I know we had one years ago, and I'm afraid we cut it because of money. And I think we need one back, and I think we need that discussion, because our custodians are doing one terrific job, but they don't have a leader out there, and Matt shouldn't be out being our, our, our maintenance supervisor. He's got enough on his plate. We need somebody that can help our custodians do the job. Like I said, they're doing a great job, but somebody needs to be in charge of watching these maintenance things, these, these things, all of a sudden you find boilers that are blowing up because there's a small maintenance thing that nobody knew about. So I, I think that's something we need to look at and get somebody in there. I know it's an extra position, but I think it's, it's, it's well worth it. We used to have it, and I think we cut it because of money, and I think we, we need it back. So that's something I, I hope maybe Caroline can bring something back to us, and, and maybe we can have a discussion about that.
Sure, but I can correct you, though, that we have a maintenance supervisor. It's Buildings and Grounds, which has fallen unmatched squarely.
Okay, I'm using the wrong term, yeah, we, we, we need a Buildings and Grounds person who is in charge of all of that stuff. Because our, our people are doing a great job, but we, we need the Building and Grounds person that can coordinate it all for everybody.
I'm absolutely glad to include that. It's actually one of the bullet points in the recruitment and retention component of my report for February, because I have concerns about our facilities, so that's absolutely something I can report on.
It's not only, I, I don't wanna see Matt get burned out doing stuff that's beyond what he should be doing. I mean, he's got so much to do already, that, that, that actually do, I don't wanna kill you, Matt, I want you around.
Right, and I, I can tell you that change was pre-Act Ten, and it was both financial and circumstantial, and Yes. Not a good choice, I think, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Board Communications Legislative Liaison Report. I mean, there's, there's a lot going on and nothing concrete, so. If you have time, you could look at WASBA. Jim, did you get to participate in the convention?
I, were you talking to me?
Yeah, we're in the delegate assembly.
Yeah, thank you. We had ten resolutions, if you remember. We went over them, and it just so happens that all of them passed. But the two that were singled out were the two that we had discussed. One is the one cent sales tax. There was quite a discussion on that to support schools, and there were 300 schools represented that were like me. I was from Whitewater, and there were 300 others like me. And it was a 179 to 118 vote for that, and that was the closest vote. Most of the other, all of them passed, by the way, and they all passed by about 250 to 50 or less, except for superintendent. Isn't that unusual? Remember, we were talking about superintendent evaluation and it being private and not available to the public? And it just so happens that there was a mix in the whole, the all 300. But the school that proposed this refer on this resolution met with the staff of the School Board Association, and they decided to add principals, assistant superintendents, principals, and other staff, all certified staff. Well, it's in the, the principals are not, are covered by law and statutes and. Well, it's in the, the principals are not, are covered by law and statutes and teachers are covered by law and statutes, but Superintendent's assistants and so on, I found out that there's, other than Superintendents, there are other that are like curriculum coordinators, is public and all that kind of stuff, so. They got in such a big argument, it took most of the afternoon, by the way, we had four hours of discussion, not on this, but on all of them. And they decided to go back to the original resolution and all they did was, not all, but they did recommend that Superintendents be private. Sorry about that.
There was a whole harmless, correct?
What's that?
Was there not a whole harmless for this year, COVID related?
No.
But anyway, WASBA does a great job, you can read their report. Board Engagement Opportunities, there is a very small list there as usual and with that, we've come to the end of our agenda. So you're gonna make me do it?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second? Okay.
All right, Jaclyn?
Coburn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yanzer?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Keenbaum?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
All right, I guess we'll see you all at the Legislative Breakfast, is that?
Oh, by the way, I won't be able to attend that, I won't, I'll be, I'm sorry, I've got something going on.
Yeah, and I won't be there either and I'm sorry about that.
I don't want to be there either, but I will be.
Well, I can't be, I'm sorry.
Be there, okay, we want to be there.
I know you do.
Did you have the date for everyone or does everyone know the date?
Seven, ten?
The fifteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And maybe Jim, if there's topics that you'd like to have us talk on, we're glad to add those to the agenda too.
Yeah, if you have questions Jim, just make sure Jaclyn gets them, same with you Kelly.
Okay, I'm sure you'll cover them, they're.
And I'm wondering whether or not the school board should be informed of the meeting of DLT with school board candidates.
Oh, thank you for the prompt. So, yes, so we scheduled, we scheduled a meeting with the possible school board or with the school board candidates to invite them for some discussion with our district leadership team. We found that they had interest in talking with the administrators, but felt like there was some value to doing that really as a team. And so we're just kind of holding a small forum for them to introduce themselves, all of them with an equal amount of time and then we'll have some questions that we'll provide them in advance that we would like them to answer about themselves.
So Jim, I think this is very similar to what you and I and Dan did.
Yes.
So I think it's, we have past practice for doing this, so it shouldn't be anything new for anybody.
Well, it's in the policy too, I think.
Oh. Even better.
We just haven't had many contested elections, that's why.
Well, I'm always in the contested elections, I don't know why.
Me too.
Discussion probably should have been under Board Engagement Opportunities, but we have a motion to adjourn before us, so, Jaclyn?
Um, we already did a real call.
Yeah, we're already. Illegal.
And we kept talking, oh my God, see you later.
Bye.